Oh, I want my money back.
Listen, you got heat.
I was gonna keep it off.
You got heat, you're good.
Twenty-third, you said?
Yep. The only thing when I went over this is, I don't remember and maybe, I spoke on this under the correspondence with the original charge of the bylaws, oh, that was a bylaws subcommittee.
Well, hold on, we're kind of down on item five already, so.
No, no, this is on the minutes from twenty-third.
Okay, okay, sorry about that, yep.
Yeah, I just, I wanted, um, did, did.
What did you say?
I was, did we talk about revising it, or I just don't remember that, that's the only reason I'm gonna ask the board, when I looked over the minutes, I'm like, I don't remember, I remember appointing Britton, but I don't remember talking about what we were gonna do with it.
I don't think anybody exactly remembered what the charge was.
Yeah, from ninety-six, okay, alright, so we're just gonna discuss it later on, let's move on, that's fine, I'm good, that answered my question.
So, I make a motion to accept the minutes of the twenty-third.
Second.
Yes, on page two versus other, third line down, I believe is on topic that are not included.
Oh, okay.
Spelling area.
Spelling area.
Okay, alright, alright.
These corrections.
And I amend my second.
Motion, corrections.
So moved.
Is there any other discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, I'm sorry, I was looking, I can't figure out these things, every time I print them out, I get these blank pages, and I don't know what they are.
Okay.
Looking at Tamika, am I doing something wrong?
Okay, next, we have minutes of February twenty-first.
Okay, you're just on time. I make a motion to accept the minutes of February twenty-first.
Yeah, I didn't have any issues with those, these are cut and dry.
Either did I.
Second.
We're gonna have the motion in a second, any comments, questions, discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, um, okay, we do have, there's a note from Tamika, annexed item is to review sign the covenant, which apparently we do not have it yet.
Yeah, I think, I think Norm, we're still waiting on Klee's bank to sign it, I've been, I've been touches base with him at least once a week, and he's still waiting for the bank to endorse his covenant.
Okay.
In your packet, I did provide you with a copy of the finalized homeowners agreement just for your review, the board doesn't have to take any action on it, but I know, Tim, you wanted in particular to take a look at it?
Yeah, I had just a few comments, and through Norm, I, the one thing, John, I, I looked over the emails that were sent, is there any commented sections on this from KP? That was where I was struggling, I was trying to find out what, what KP said about this, because I sort of got the final document, but.
They, yeah, they didn't, they didn't say much, Tim, they didn't have any comments, I think, I think there was just clarifying language they wanted to put in, I don't remember any, any serious comments coming back, they commented mostly on the covenant, those are the ones I saw.
Okay, alright, good, I just, I went through it, and I've only got a couple questions that I want to put before the board, and talk about them, and that's it, because initially I had three bullets, and I backed it up to two, um, the, the one was on pay, or it's Article five, um, number five, it says, "The town shall be considered a beneficiary of the trust for the sole purpose of ensuring the maintenance of the trust property as set forth in Article four," and I wasn't sure, does the town want to, I was struggling with, does the town want to take that on, because it's basically saying they're taking over that whole property when it's not town property, that's what I was struggling with.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a good question, Tim, um, I would agree with you, I don't, I'm not sure the town wants to get into the property management business.
Yep, so that's why I put it as a huge question, I wanted to bring it before the board, and see if we need to go back to KP and George Curici and say.
Change.
It's, uh, this one right here.
Oh.
I'm sorry, it was Article five, number five, where, and when I read that, I'm going like, ah, I don't think the town wants to be managing Hilltop Estates if things go sideways.
No, but, but there, like, like you said, sir, I mean, we gotta have protection for the people that do live there, so.
Yeah, Britton, I'm good with that, but I, I wasn't, I was looking for something else, you know, like, does it go into receivership, where attorneys step in or something like that?
Right, yeah. A relief mechanism.
Yeah.
Here's, here's where I agree with Tim, because in a homeowners association document, if there's a violation, the town has no right to enforce this document, it's a private document, so I agree with Tim, where it's a private document that the town can't enforce, but if something defaults, or something happens, the town takes it over, that's, I think that's a valid point.
I agree.
I just wanted to bring it up, so it could be talked about, again, we're not signing, I know, but we must get this all away before we.
I didn't really read it that way.
It could be read that way.
I, I see beneficiary of trust, and I immediately think, uh.
So, at least get some.
That, it means the ownership of the requirements.
Yeah, and see, that, again, it doesn't hurt to, Norm, I think maybe to just ask KP, does that mean the town takes it over?
I mean, it's a simple question.
It's in the event no one wants to pay for any repairs, or things that are.
If the repairs, if the repairs are not.
Right.
Yeah.
The town.
Has right.
Has a right to go in and make the repairs, and charge the trust.
Bill them, yeah.
Correct.
But, again, does, I mean, the, the town wouldn't accept a roadway that isn't up to town standard, so.
Yeah.
If, you know, if something falls in disrepair, say it's the drainage, say it's a wall, say it's the sidewalks, so that this, this could be read that the town would be, would be taking over something that hasn't been maintained.
And again, I don't want to get into a big, I just want KP to look it over and say, does the town have any liability, I guess, John, that's what I'm getting at.
No, no, that's, that, I agree with you, Tim, I, I, if, um, if the board's okay with this, I will, um, I will follow up with KP Law on this.
LC is a big thing, too, the town isn't gonna take over the trust, it's only gonna take, take over any work that might have to be done, but why isn't it worded like that?
Yeah, because when I.
Yeah, as soon, as soon as the town of Rutland has to touch whatever the repairs may be, I mean, let's face it, we're gonna have to own that.
Yeah.
And that's not.
It may not mean, it may not mean that, but at least let's check into it.
Yeah, I'm okay, if I'm wrong, I don't mind being wrong, I got it, I'm on at least five times a day at work, so.
Do you have anything else on that?
Um, um, the other, and I'm trying to find where it was, oh, I thought I marked this, there was a section here that described all of the items, let me see, I've got it in work, I red, I redlined these, it was a section.
What are you talking about, Tim, the items that are part of the homeowner's responsibility?
Yeah, and there was water and sewer in there, and I thought, and I thought, and again, this is a Chris question, it really isn't a legal question, I thought all water and sewer piping, even in the Hilltop, was gonna be owned by the town, and maintained by the town.
There's a difference, Tim, anything that extends from the town right-of-way to the house is, is the homeowner's responsibility.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I just wanted to make sure the main, call them the mains, coming up the road.
Up Rutland.
Yep.
Yeah, up Rutland, then up the new road.
Yeah.
Um, before there broke off to the houses, house lots, so to speak, was town, and it wasn't gonna be maintained by, and again, that might be, that might be what Chris wants to do now, but again, our previous.
Yeah.
DPW director said, no way we're gonna have private sewer and water in this town ever again.
Yeah, we need to look at the plans, I'm ninety-nine percent sure there's an easement on those plans for water and sewer.
Yeah, I just thought in here that it called out, I can't find, I hit the, irritates me when I redline something.
Well, Tim, um, if you, if you come across that, just shoot me an email.
Yeah, I've gotta find it, yeah, well, because there was a section here that went through all of the components, that was, the trust was in charge of, you know, it was roadway, it was maintenance, it was.
Right at the beginning.
Is that where I missed it? Oh, here it is, yeah, it's Article three, purposes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it had pipes, conduit, culverts, channels, I'm fine with that, but it had, stormwater subdivision, maybe I missed it, I, I just wanted to.
Well, so what, what are you, what are you wondering, Tim, exactly?
I guess on, on number three, I guess my question is, is the town water and sewer that's coming up that one road into Hilltop, is that town water and sewer, or is that maintained by the trust, that's a simple question.
Okay, so it's within the roadway and within the town right-of-way?
Correct, yeah, I, I just want to verify that, that's all I'm asking.
I can say, I'm pretty sure you're gonna say there's an easement.
Yeah, I saw the easement, but I, I just, we got a new DPW chief, I want to make sure that Chris is on board with that, and he doesn't have another.
Yeah.
Thought process.
Okay. I can, I can send an email on those two things to KP Law.
Those are mine.
Make sure you have anything else.
I had a question, too, about, there's, um, that device they showed in the stormwater report, that's, it's either at the end of, ending across the street, like disperses of water, or something like that.
Right, from the detention pond.
Something like that, it's a.
Across the street on Blair's property, and it continued.
Are they responsible for that, is that something that should be in here?
Well, it's under the drainage system.
Yeah, so, anything in said pipes.
It's all for maintenance, it should be up to them.
Correct.
Yes.
Seems like more expensive item in there, um, and.
That means any, any part of what contributes to drainage, in some instances, it could be even swales.
Yeah, and they call that out here, they call drainage swales, John, in.
Section three.
Yep.
One other thing I was just curious about, just the whole process of, say, a homeowner doesn't pay, and the liens go against the house, or something, somewhere in here, it said, the next person who buys it, they, they have to pay for the lien?
Yeah, that's, that's a legal mechanism, Keith, that the town doesn't really get into.
Yeah, I was just curious why it's not, the person selling the house has to pay back what they won't pay for.
Suppose they just.
That's, yeah, that's, that's, that's between the homeowners.
You can walk away, you can leave your keys with the bank and walk away.
And then somebody. Yeah, Keith, that's usually, yeah, at that point, the bank owns the house, and the person may or may not have.
Yeah.
Had the ability to pay that off, so they, that's usually negotiated in the deal.
Yep.
Yeah.
Other than that, I.
Anything else, Jamie?
There was, where was that five and seven, that was the one thing, Dick, I, I agree with you, I thought I saw that, initially, they said it was like five people before the trustee plan kicks in, and in the back, it says seven, maybe I missed that.
Yeah, I don't know whereabouts it was, I did not mark that, but I have other things that I've marked.
Alright, I'm done, I'll shut up, call you.
Article four, um, I was gonna say, in the first paragraph, about four lines up, uh, and on reading, impose a burden on lots described above, and I feel that it should, in Article two, should have been enclosed in that, instead of saying above, above what?
Oh, that's a good point, it doesn't, it doesn't describe where it is.
Okay.
Yep, that's legal terminology, just should be cleaned up.
Okay, and the next, on the next page, uh, four, I've been reading too much stuff lately, I think, is out of his or her personnel, or should it say them? One days, oh, God, that's.
Oh, no.
Okay, okay, I'm just, 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 just saying here.
I, I'm gonna, I think we should just leave that one alone.
Okay, I'll leave it alone. Uh, the town shall be considered, this is number five, a beneficiary.
Yeah.
And to me.
Yeah, yep.
I feel, too, that has to go back to the lawyer.
Yeah.
Alright, um, we're gonna leave that one alone, uh, trustees, the trust, this is Article seven, just the third line down and number one, the trustee shall raise such sum as he shall deem necessary to defray the expense, and just he, and.
That's gotta be updated, yeah.
Should be changed.
He or she, yep, to be, to be, often to go back and be consistent with that terminology.
Yep. Okay, um, on the next page, on the very first top line, number three, uh, when you're reading down, trustee shall be added to the trust something, RES?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's.
What's RES?
It's a legal term, it means property of the trust, I had to look that one up, because it sounded strange, it's in here twice, and it is, it's a legal term regarding the property of the trust.
Oh.
Okay.
It's an official name.
Okay, well, that's legal terminology.
And then, then number five, in there, it says junior, that's like about the fifth line down, on number five, says junior for each first mortgage.
Well, that, yeah, that's, that's, that's a term for, I believe, Norm, younger, or most recent, or.
Yeah, most recent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, the, yeah, yeah, I've seen that before.
Like a junior associate versus a senior associate in a law firm.
Yeah.
Let's see, oh, oh, Tim, that second one, or the, the seven lots, I was talking about, that is Article nine.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah, but I thought there was a five or.
There was a five someplace.
Okay.
And.
Well, I'll ask about that.
Yeah, just, because we want to be consistent, John, to make sure.
Alright, um, Article eleven, number three.
Oh, there's where it is, no, Dick, that's where it is, it's back in the meetings, and that, that's why I didn't redline it, because they, the, the five is talking about a quorum for meeting, and seven, that seven lot owner is talking about when they can transfer the trust.
Oh, okay.
So I'm okay with that.
Okay, so that's okay?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Alright, so I don't have to check on that, okay.
I think it was, yeah, Article eleven, three, um, second line up, before or after, and such notice before or after the meeting, and I put down here, why after?
Any meeting which is, is not given to any lot owner, so many legal meetings, each lot owner.
I, I just hesitate, gentlemen, to get into, too much into the weeds on this, this is, again, a private document, so the way the meetings of the lot owners operate, I, I would, I would just, I would just argue that, you know, I don't want to get too, too much into nitpicking us on this.
By a meeting written file with records, well, alright.
Number twelve, in that first paragraph, on the third or third line up from the bottom, alternate or termination of this trust, and I believe, you know, they can't terminate the trust, we have it in there for good, because they have to have. They have to have the town back, let's put it that way, so the trust has to be there.
Let me read this, alright.
So, this, it seems like between that and the other thing we read about the town being a beneficiary, it almost seems like these two things gives them an avenue to terminate the trust and leave the town on the hook for maintenance.
Yeah, I think, John, I think Dick's got a good point here, because.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
In thirteen, it says they can come to the town, and the, the planning board could, could terminate the trust as well.
Yeah.
And I would wonder why, why the town would do that.
That's, yeah, and another thing I.
I mean, I don't have a problem if they have it in there, because that's just them saying they want to do it.
But, you allowing them to do it, and to me, that is not right, not if, you know, if the town's gonna be held liable, if you want to make sure.
You're giving them an out, I guess.
Yes, yes.
The biggest thing is, you know, by a citizen's petition, someone can bring a warrant article to have the town.
Yep, that is very true.
As a road, and that would, in effect, terminate that trust.
If it was held by the town.
By the town, and that, that's whether it's legal or not, they can do that.
Here's what, Dick, what I like in, in section, Article thirteen, the trust shall not be terminated without prior written approval of the Rutland Planning Board.
Yeah.
So that's sort of, that's.
And I added one more thing to that, and town council. Well, I don't know.
Honestly, honestly, I kind of agree with Dick on that one, it wouldn't hurt to, um, in, in that instance, to, um, coordinate with town council, to find out any legal reference.
Because it has the power to.
Yeah, they don't.
I'm looking out for the town's interest, that's why I'm saying I want town council involved in it, because if they're coming to terminate or do anything whatsoever, it means that they're lacking the money to do what they're supposed to have done.
What if you put in there with town council?
How about this gentleman, how, how about this gentleman, wouldn't approve of the planning board? And coordination with town council?
Yeah.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Alright, I'll go with that.
Yeah, just, they're our tool to make sure we're legally okay.
Yeah, just making clear the town council can't approve this, because they wouldn't approve or deny it.
Can I put in there elected town Rutland Planning Board to make sure that's there?
I'll, I'll make, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Wow, wait, 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 wait a second.
That will ensure.
That would ensure that we'll always be elected.
Would that stuff require a public hearing, like?
Again, it, it could, but that would be a determination when and if the time comes.
Yeah, okay. Since it's not a special permit, I don't know how we'd handle that, if, if they came to us with a request for a termination.
It could be, it could, the board could choose to have a public hearing.
Yeah, we could, we can choose any time to have a public hearing.
Right, right, but I don't think we want to pin ourselves down in this document.
No, no, but.
Make that change, and.
If that ever happens.
How it gets handled, we could deal with it, if the time comes.
I mean, we, we would have, this would be my opinion, I have DPW, I would have fire, police, town administrator, I have the whole party here to have a discussion on that.
Yeah, let's, let's not go down that road, because, that's.
I don't want to add that, no, that's just my thoughts.
No, 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 just that, that's, that, yeah, that's, let's not go too far down that road, that's.
Alright, well, I think with those comments.
I've got a couple.
Okay.
Alright, Norm.
Thank you, guys.
One insignificant, uh, they're talking about the perpetual maintenance of the roadway.
Which, which article?
Where are you?
All the way back in verse of Article three.
Article three, yeah.
And, I, I think, I think, I don't think it's necessary, but one of the things is, there's no mention of snow removal.
Oh, that's a great point.
Well, maintenance, you know, and all of this kind of, and it's.
No, maintenance is a little different.
Yeah.
Other things, too, where the heck was it here, uh, yeah, I think in Article four, "To inspect whether the trust property in good safe operable condition, without limiting to maintain the roadway utilities within the roadway and ensure for safe passage by vehicular, pedestrian traffic, as well as visible vehicles for emergency purposes." You know, it could be at least inferred that that includes clearing snow in the winter.
And I would ask, Norm, this perpetual maintenance?
Yeah.
Is that, that's where, I would ask KP, does that include the snow removal? Because perpetual is basically forever, and that, just, but you got a good point, it doesn't say snow removal in here.
It says in common driveways, even the, like, the homeowners' agreements that we get for common driveways, we do include it.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Yep.
Yep.
Good point.
And we say that in our subdivision, that they have to do all maintenance and snow removal, until it's turned over to a town road.
Yeah.
So.
So, that's number one, uh, I didn't think that was necessarily a big one, but it sort of is. Uh, Article five, page two, this one really kind of gets. In the third line down, Article five, provided, however, that in the event that lot owner combines another lot as designated on the plan, in other words, if they buy two lots.
Yep.
It says, "The land together shall constitute a single lot for the purposes hereof, meaning the trust," now, all of a sudden, there isn't nine anymore.
No, there's eight.
There's only eight, and therefore, that person that has the two lots is still only gonna be.
One vote.
One vote, and responsible for one ninth.
That is a loophole, Norm, good catch.
And if you carry it to its extreme.
If you buy three.
Until, until this goes into, so, so to speak, uh, well, not until goes into effect, until those, let's say, seven lots, okay, are sold, once one of the lots are sold, eight others are in common ownership, so that would mean those eight together are only one lot.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Blair, being a trustee, to begin with, he owns all the lots, so he has, and if he doesn't sell them all?
But, but if he owns, if he owns them all.
Yep.
And they're combined.
Yeah.
By combined meaning under the same ownership, as far as I'm concerned.
Yep.
That's by the language here, he's still only responsible for one ninth.
Yeah, got a point.
That, that, John, is.
That's a KP question.
That's a KP, yes.
That's a good one, Norm, that is excellent, Dick, I, I didn't catch that, ooh, because you could have two homeowners that don't like, you know, that, like, in the back where those lots sit, and I'm gonna buy both of them.
Yeah.
It's only two hundred K, what the heck, I'll buy both of them.
Yeah.
And then I'll put my house where I want to put it, and the other lot is basically free space.
Yeah.
And if you have two of them do that, there, there's four lots and now are two, so now you reduce down to seven, so you gotta sell all lots to be able to turn the trust over to the trustees.
Yeah.
Whoa, I'm not sure I like that.
No.
Interesting, okay, what else you got?
That one, that was the only, that one stuck right out of me, so.
Oh, man, that was a good catch.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I had a quick question, because you mentioned maintenance, it's probably just a, just a quick comment that you guys would respond with, is, say they, say the road wears down, and they're just like, well, why don't we just make it a dirt road or gravel road, is there anything to stop them from doing that, instead of paying to have it paved?
Other than the fact that there's going to be a ten and a half percent.
Raid.
Raid.
Okay, yeah.
They would not be able to maintain it, as a gravel road.
It would wash out.
Right, it's the flat area.
I can tell you, because I wanted to buy Helly's house on, you know what I'm talking about. And that thing, if that, even when it was asphalted, if it lasted two or three years, it was a miracle.
Yeah.
Because that sucker would wash out all the time.
Yeah, okay.
That's why Rich said, Tim, if you're buying, if you're buying Mr. Michelonis's property, we're gonna do this right, we're putting a base in, and we're gonna put it. That's why Rich said, Tim, if you're buying, if you're buying Mr. Michelonis's property, we're gonna do this right. We're putting a base in, and we're gonna put a road in.
So gentlemen, the intention of this roadway is to be accepted by the town when the subdivision's done, correct?
No, 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 it's a private road, private road.
Okay, it's not really private, okay.
Forever.
Forever, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Is that it, gentlemen?
That's all I had.
Britain, you got anything?
No, um, the only thing I will say is I have seen, um, especially more so on the HOI, HOA side than the trust side is usually developers do have mechanisms for, uh, basically, you know, supreme control of the site, meaning like that they are the holding interest until the last lot is sold.
Right.
Uh, I, I have seen that, that's not uncommon. Um, so for Blair to, to put himself in a situation, you know, legally where he is in control of this trust, that's not uncommon. I don't see an issue with that, but where I do would like, again, we've all said it, I don't wanna kick a dead horse here, but, um, we do, and I have seen language before where at no point in time, and I'm paraphrasing, at no point in time is the town of Rutland responsible for the shortcomings of said trust.
Uh, that's the first that I've seen, Britain. I've never seen that before.
Yeah, so I, I don't, it's, it's one of those things, I don't know if it stands up legally on its own, but, um, if, if there's something where or statements could be made, or the language even cleaned up, where, um, we were taking the town of Rutland out of that maintenance capability for a private road, then yeah, whatever.
Honestly, that, I, I, you know, whatever they need to do, I, I would just take that sentence out of there. That would, I'd be, that, that would be my recommendation.
I, I agree. I, I think under no, I think we're all in agreement that under no circumstance does the town of Rutland wanna step in and, and start to maintain this particular, uh.
No.
Like.
I don't know if they call that out anywhere here, that's the problem. It's just that number five, where the beneficiary, that's the only thing I can consider under section, um, five, that's the only place I could see, Britain, where it looked like the town was gonna get stuck with this was when, um, when maintenance wasn't done, under section five, under beneficiaries. That's where.
Agreed, and actually, I, in my personal humble opinion, I think beneficiary is the wrong word there. I think it's the, the liable party to, to clean it up. So, uh, again, I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent. I don't like that language at all.
Well, well, even liability, Britain, I would not, the town should not be liable at all.
No, I, I, I I agree one hundred percent. We're all up here on the same page.
Yeah.
But we have to make that, um, we have to make that legal statement, in my personal opinion.
So let me, let me look into that with K P and see what they recommend.
See, see, I, I, I think the town has a liability, and I would even bet that it's just in state law to correct any dangerous situations.
I think Joe would tell you that.
Uh, and, and if, you know, you know, can the town seek reimbursement for whatever they have to do? Yeah, that's clearly in there. They can still go after by way of a lien on the properties.
Hmm, hmm.
Okay.
When he can go.
Oh, you're talking about, uh, the HOA that, that the town, uh, keeps turning their back on.
But if something, if something is in danger to the public
Yeah.
of the town of Rutland, I think the town is obligated. I don't care about trust or anything.
No.
Is obligated to correct that.
And the town's supposed to go on in there and fix those trails.
Like you said, through lien or lawyers and.
Boy, and that's the one where, if this goes back to K P, that's a good, uh, item B of the, uh, question. Is part of this, um, town, town stepping in to take over when things aren't done, is it, is it legally required for the town to do that? And maybe that should be part of five down here.
Yeah.
Finding what their responsibilities are.
As well as it could be.
Hey, uh, and, and Tim, um, and Mr. Chairman, I think that's why the dissolution of the trust is so concerning.
Yeah.
Because if, if the trust is in effect, i.e. or HOA, however you wanna, however you wanna describe it, as long as there are funds and or funds being paid to that, and the town needs to step in and do emergency repairs, I mean, there has to be a mechanism to reimburse the town for a private entity getting repairs from the taxpayers. In, in, in my opinion.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so this isn't as clean cut as we thought it would be. But it's definitely, I will say, I'll give George credit on this, it does have some teeth for, for what we were asking for.
Yeah.
So this is not our typical HOA that we get that basically says, oh, yeah, just make sure you got monies there to take care of your shrugs.
And I, I think some clarification from town council.
Yeah.
Take care of a lot of that.
Yep, excellent. So should we, should we let Klee know that even if he gets the bank statement, we've still got this thing to clean?
Well, Tim, Tim, I'll, I'll take care of that when I'm back in the office. I will prepare an email to K P, and Klee will be CC on with all these questions and comments.
Outstanding, thank you, sir.
Okay, next agenda item is board signatures for registry of deeds.
Congratulations on your.
I will turn this one over to Tamika.
This, this is gonna be, I, I, I can't wait to see that mechanical arm come out of the screen to sign.
Hey, Britain, how you finding this, buddy?
Dick, if that happens, just run, I'm out.
Tell me about it.
I'll sign for Dick.
Britain, you're gonna need to get in sometime to.
Yeah, so my, my plan is tomorrow morning on the way to work, I'll stop in, cuz I gotta do some stuff at the clerk's office anyways, so.
Being around like eight thirty-ish or so, um, is that timing work okay for you? Cuz I'll have the document from tonight.
Um, Tamika, my day starts around six, so if you could do that, that'd be great.
Oh, boy, yeah.
No, I'm kidding, no, that's fine.
Is he a beast? Did he get?
Yeah, I'll stop by, no worries, thank you.
You could leave it out on the table, on the front there that's locked?
No, 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 it's fine.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, uh, that taking care of board submission policy, item number four.
Yes, so back, back in December twelfth, the board had agreed to a policy for submission of materials to be considered, um, at upcoming meetings to be seven days prior. However, um, resulting, um, coming out of discussions since, um, I went and did some, there were some questions about it, and there's some concern about it. Um, just for the board's identification, the first part of the memo, I put out a, a query on the planist listserv as far as which communities had similar policies, and you can see the list of them on the first page of the memo. However, I do agree with, um, one of the stipulations that I talked about with Norm in particular, um, making an exception for inspection reports on active projects that we get from Quinn Engineering. Um, I do agree that that would be a worthwhile exception to make because there may be items in an inspection report from Quinn that need to be act on, acted on quickly by the board and cannot wait two weeks. So I don't mind putting that exception in there. I think it's worthwhile. And when I asked Tamika about what's most important in receiving documents and, you know, posting agendas and packets is to have the items by the end of the, end of the day on Wednesday, the week before a meeting. So that's why you see a revised policy in this memo that moves that deadline a day to the end of the day on Wednesday instead of Tuesday, the week before the meeting, because that extra twenty-four hours really doesn't make a difference to myself and Tamika in getting the information out there to the board and also on the website. So, um, I think that's a reasonable compromise to move that twenty-four hours and to add that exception in there, so, um, that's what I'm presenting to the board. If the board is okay with making those changes to the policy, that was a tough.
Yeah. I would like to add, I think town council should be in there also.
Is the.
Anytime. Because most generally, we're waiting for them to.
As exempt from that deadline.
Exactly.
That's what I was really thinking, town council.
Town council reports as well?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm fine with that.
I'm just trying to think of this anybody else. Hear from.
Well.
DPW?
Or third-party vendors.
DPW is a town, I would say that should be, yes.
Well.
How many times have we asked Joel and the things that, to, you know, try to get back to us and, and things, and yes.
Fire, police.
Yes, I think at any town.
Oh, hold on, well, gentlemen, gentlemen, hold on. I, I would recommend not getting too crazy with this, because now we start adding too many exemptions, now what's the point of having the policy?
Well, that's what I'm saying right here. That's what I have here. Um, let's change it all.
Yeah.
Let's throw it out.
Yeah, I, I don't agree with that, gentlemen, I don't. Because it's being watered down to the point of not bother, not, the policy's not effective if we add all these exceptions in there. We're gonna have a list of a half a dozen different exceptions.
Well, I tell you, there's been more than once, like DPW, Joel, we were counting on him to, to answer back to us and, and things like that, and and when he's.
I, I think, I think it should be, I, my professional opinion is, it be, it should be restricted to only those times where there's an active project going on, and we get an inspection report. In terms of the process during public hearings, a public hearing is a public hearing, and a public hearing, the information needs to be out there for the public to review, so if it's comments from DPW, fire, police, now, you're kind of circumventing the whole public hearing process if you put in this.
Wasn't it, we're trying to get the doggone thing, you know, to go before town meeting, for the road, and we had to go there?
We, we can fix that. I, I somewhat agree with John that we need to, how do I say this?
You know, I.
Force timely responses?
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I, I agree, I agree with anything that's going on is, for example, in, in the way of a public hearing. But, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but if DPW chief, uh, sends an email to us that, you know, over on Briton Estates, uh, that, that bridge is getting ready, ready to collapse, or, or, uh, you know, the new culvert's there, something is caving in. Do we wanna wait a whole week to hear that?
No. No.
You know, if, if, if. To an application.
And again, an emergency situation, that doesn't.
Fine.
Yeah. Situation like that, it would have to come before the order to meeting, it would be dealt with.
Yeah, see, I think, Norm, that, that's something that should come in the planner and, and with, again, this is my opinion, how it should work. If something, let's just say that extreme, like, uh, Charnock Hill Bridge was collapsing, and they wanted to get it, that should, uh, Chris should get in touch with John, John should call you, and maybe we need to have an emergency meeting.
Yeah.
That, that's my opinion. I don't think we should.
Right.
We should zip this into the policy, but we still should have the flexibility as the board to be able to make emergency decisions inside of seven days, and I think that's more common sense than, than policy. I just don't want the policy, John, I guess, to Norm's point, and this is being in the corporate world, policies have hogtied me many times, and that's what I'm trying to, how do I say this?
The thing. But, but where, but this is a public, this is, this is a public process, the planning board. And that's part of what we're trying to be aware of and sensitive to is having time for stuff to, for board members to be properly prepared for meetings, and for the public to have a chance to review something. Those are the two things we're trying to accomplish, where if something comes in a half hour before the meeting, so, some planning board members won't have a chance to look at it before the meeting starts, which is not right. And also, it won't be made available to the public, which is not right, during a public hearing especially.
Correct.
I, I, I fully agree, I fully agree with that.
As you see, there are many times that, there are many times that have this policy and even stricter policy.
A, as long as it's flexibility, Norm, I'm okay.
Well, I don't know, may, maybe we can leave it as just common sense for critical situations.
Yes, which, which.
I, I think something a little more official would be, um, and this is just one man's opinion, uh, more so directed to the chair's discretion um, in regards to, like, the DPW or town assets, you know, submitting information that may have a bearing on the hearing. Um, as far as an applicant submitting a new diagram at the eleventh hour, I mean, obviously, that's, that's, that's what we don't wanna do. That's, I agree.
See, yeah, 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 anything that's within a public hearing, I, I agree with the policy one hundred percent. I'm just thinking about what, what about the day-to-day things that happen outside of public hearings that need, or may need immediate attention.
Yeah.
And, and, but, how, how often is that?
Well, it used to be.
How often is that, that something comes, has come up that, that, that that absolutely cannot wait in an emergency situation?
Uh, we, we, I shouldn't say emergency situation, but, uh, I know we had a situation where a builder was laying sewer and water lines and covering them up without any inspection being done.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's, that's, again, that's our peer review engineer should be doing inspections, also the DPW.
Well.
The problem is they didn't know about it.
They didn't know about it.
Somebody was driving by and mentioned it.
They can't, they can't.
Again, this stuff happens all the time, gentlemen, and this is not something that would necessarily have to be dealt with at a meeting. You could ask the developer if the situation got serious enough. You could ask the developer to come before the board and discuss it, but that's something that, again, is part of the day-to-day business.
Yeah.
That doesn't.
Yeah, and that, and that's a DPW and building inspector purview where they can give a cease and desist work order.
Correct, correct.
But if it's an emergency or, or whatever.
I mean, Norm, we don't know all the facts.
Well, it wouldn't even wait for the planning board.
How about we do this?
It doesn't need to happen.
Policies can be changed, can be modified. Why don't we get it in place, see how it works, and if we have some issues with it, then go back and modify it. That's my. I, I mean, I would rather get something in place and get it started and see how it works. And Dick, if we run into problems, like we have another, you know, the, the bridge, the bridge, uh, rubber stuff comes up, and it, and it's gotta be, and Chris has problems and wants to talk to us about what, what in the conditions of that subdivision can we do to go back on the builder? Then that goes to John, might have to come to the board, and that's a discussion that's outside of the seven-day process because it's a need right now. You know, I, I think we need to just get something in place.
Right, that's a discussion, that's a discussion.
Yeah.
So, here's the other thing, gentlemen, I mean, this policy's always, already been in place for a couple months, and we're changing it. I also don't wanna get in the habit of changing policies all the time. Now, I mean, yeah, right back to one.
Yeah, because I don't like the, the, the way the policy is written up is I, I mean.
And I mean, and in talking, in talking to Britain, and I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna put Britain on the spot, but Britain, um, expressed to me that he, he runs, Kevin Quinn told me, he deals with policies like this in every other town he works in. This is nothing new. It's not earth-shattering, this is common practice.
Yes. It is, there, there's, there's a lot of municipalities that have, um, you know, whatever you wanna call it, policies, um, can, you know, restrictions in place so that the public is aware that they're not gonna go to a hearing on a Monday night uh, from a document from a developer that was sent in at three P M. that day, and nobody's had a chance to review it, and then it sways our vote. We're like, oh, well, this report says everything's great, and then we vote on it, and we haven't given due diligence. It just, it leaves an open, uh, an open situation, and I, I mean, none, none of us want that. I'm, again, I'm not, um, I'm not saying we should do the way the other towns do, I'm just, the, there is a lot of good that can come from that and enforcing that type of policy.
I say, let's just give it a shot and see how it works. I mean, I'm, I'm I'm more of a try it and modify it. I mean, I've done that. I'm more of a try it and modify it. I mean, I've done that a lot. I'm not saying, John, rewrite it, but let's just see how it works. And if it works great and we don't need to do anything, great. If some, if some situations come up that we, that we need to modify something, then we can talk about it at that time. But having nothing right now is I'm not, I'm not excited about that. I wanna get something in place.
I also, I also don't want changing the policy to be, to be a developer isn't happy with it and decides to complain behind my back about it. This needs to be something that's supportive.
To me, it, it also, what if you have a lack of stuff to do and things come in? You're gonna have to wait and when we're sitting here to put on our thumbs. Well, I know that doesn't happen often, but, but there again, you have no idea what's gonna happen in the future.
I just, I'd like to get something in place and, and see, you know, if, if, if it doesn't suit us, then we change it. And we work with John, exchange it, but I'd rather get something in place now.
How about changing this?
And I don't know, this, I don't know if this is the case with Forest Hill Drive Extension, but the board asked me to look in, to look into the form of surety. And what I discovered was there's a condition number three. Drive Extension subdivisions approval that says the approved plans were not to be signed until, uh, for, until a form of surety was in place. At the meeting on September 26th, this board signed the approved plans on the same night the decision was signed, violating one of the main conditions. Now, we can't go back and put that G. Back in the bottle because the developer has no reason to come back to the table and put down a form of surety on that roadway. And I talked to town council about that and they said, the only rep, the only, the only thing the board could do is potentially vote to rescind the subdivision approval. So there's a situation where something happened at a meeting that never should have happened. And maybe it was because things did not get properly reviewed before that meeting.
Well, there's other things, John, and I don't wanna go into it now. The planning board is not the only one in this town that's made mistakes, so.
And I'm not saying that, Tim. That's just an example. That's very concerning because now we have no leverage to go back and have a developer put down a bond on a roadway. That ship has sailed. We have to swallow that one.
I don't think we need to dwell on that one.
Yeah. I, I say let's get the policy in place, see how it works and.
I'm not gonna, because may I ask, when did it turn from Planning and Community Development Department? When was that done?
It was like that under Dave.
Pardon?
That's not, that's not, that's not on topic. That's, that's not my decision also, so.
Well, I wasn't talking to you. I was talking to the, when was that?
It was, it was under the direction of some one of our town administrators. I don't know which one.
Big Margaret.
Oh.
Community and Economic Development has been, I believe, no, maybe correct, an adopted.
That was, uh.
That was Dave George's title and I think Margaret hired Dave George.
No, she didn't.
Who did?
Um.
Robert Reed?
No, no, bef- a- after him, uh.
Nick.
No.
Mike Nicholson. Mike didn't hire.
No, no, it was.
He didn't?
He hired in 2018.
Yeah, so that would've been Margaret.
Margaret, he, was he here that?
I'm pretty sure I saw in the, uh, personnel files, it was Margaret.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean.
It's moot point.
Departments is a common practice.
Okay, can I ask what, what this has to be agenda?
Paul, you, you've got a policy here. I'm saying I don't particularly care, but not, I should say, and, and act upon, and I put down here, unless there is lack of items for the next meeting. I mean, I, I don't know. How do you discuss things if you can't discuss them? And that's what we're here for, discussing this policy.
I'm certain that there's.
I'm just gonna go back to, do we wanna include town council as an exception?
I do.
I still think we should.
Yes.
Other than that.
That's, that's fine. I can add that.
Yeah, that, that would be the only one you nor might add.
Other than that, I'll buy it as a.
A test and see how it works.
Yeah.
I mean, cause we, we, the, the board hasn't had, we've had regs. We've got bylaws, but we've never had policy. So let's try this policy out and see how it goes. I mean, Dick, I get it.
Gentlemen, at the end of the memo.
I don't wanna be, and that's why I said hogtied. And John's right, we are public, we're not private. But I just don't wanna be hogtied if something needs to be discussed. Um, but I, I, I do agree that seven days, how many times in the past has something shown up when, even when Susan was here? That, that day and said, oh, I want you to sign the A and R. And I'm like, and, and we jumped through hoops to do it and that's gotta stop.
Yeah.
Cause, so anyhow, that's, that's enough topic for me.
Also, Tim, if I could, yes, the attachment to that memo, you will see a spreadsheet that I've developed that will go on the planning board's website for the rest of the meeting schedule, for the rest of this calendar year, showing every single deadline.
Okay.
An applicant has to meet. So it's gonna be out in the open as far as when they need to have stuff to the board or to, to the department to distribute to the board.
Okay. I'm fine if that's out, if that's out on our website because that's what we're gonna have to do. We're gonna have to, it's just, I, I gotta say, and I, and you asked you here, and, and Tamika, that website sometimes is difficult to click through.
Oh, yeah.
That's, there's, there's a lot of clicks that has to be gone to got there as opposed to our, and I'm not saying go to, back to the old one. I'm just saying, this is my opinion that there's a lot of clicks to get places and maybe there's a better way to do it. I don't know. I just wanna put that.
Planning board page or?
Anyway.
Anywhere.
Anywhere.
Yeah.
What you wanna go to?
Yeah, there's a lot of clicks.
I don't think it's any different than the last website.
Oh, is it? Big time.
No, I really don't. I mean, so, so right now, if you wanna go to the regs for the Planning and Community Development Department, you go to Government, which is not a click, Planning and Community Development, and all the regs are right there.
Okay, maybe it's just me getting used to it.
Find an agenda, find an agenda in two clicks. You can't. For anything.
So it's three clicks.
Yeah.
The calendar is a little weird. Some, there's, I don't know.
So it's a new website.
It, it, yeah, 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 yeah. I, I'm just making a comment. I'm not saying change the damn website.
You go to the planning board page, you can click view agendas and all the agendas are right there.
And minutes.
No, they're not.
The, the only thing.
Not without too many clicks. Let's put it that way. You can get to it.
Well, I'm sorry, we added an additional click for a, a $30,000 website that was paid for by a state.
Well, anyway.
So.
Anyway.
Let me ask a question and Tamika or Austin maybe answers. On the side where you've got, i- i- is that, can we set up like a something so we can get to this on the, on the right, left side of that, of our planning board page when you get there? You know, I'm talking about where we used to have on the side, you know, like bylaws, blah, blah, blah. Is that something that can?
Tim, it's, Tim, it's on the department website. You scroll down the left side, there's everything. There's, there's links to other websites. All the forms and appi- all the forms and applications, the fee schedule, everything is right there.
Okay, that's all I was asking for. So that way somebody can get to these sections relatively quick and they can see this.
But to be responsive to you, I mean, I think you raised a great point about, um, what is considered on in the web community, like quick links?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, or frequently utilized links. Um, so we have a little bit of those, like, you know, pay your tax bill, view the property maps. However, there's, and I think an opportunity for another section for other things for other departments and we can change.
It's evolving. I get it.
You go to the City of Westers website and it changes every month for what's on the front page because it's, you know, seasonal. Right now, we're talking about voting. A month ago was dog tax, right?
Me, I, I won't even get into the state website because that makes me sick, going through that thing.
Well, that's new too.
Yeah, that's, uh.
I will say on the planning board page, um, I created two buttons right at the top and one of them is to click on the meeting packets and the other is to click on public hearing documents. So that's right on the top of the planning board page. So it's easy to access. People just click the button and then it brings up all the packets and submissions by date. And they can choo- just choose whichever one they want.
We need to have a planning board training session.
I think so.
That's who we need. We need to, we need to have Tamika sit us in a conference room and train us. Cause, uh, literally my, my company does that for how to get around inside of, uh, our websites. So we, I mean, we, I, I just, four years with Eversource and I'm still finding new places to go on, uh, at our website. So anyhow. All right, let's move on.
Another thing I just wanna say is, this policy starts out with any documents or materials to be submitted. That doesn't mean that, quote, a planning board member cannot ask for an agenda item to be placed, even 24 hours.
No, you can. No, yeah, absolutely. You can, you can ask, but an agenda, an agenda can be modified within that 48 hours.
Can I ask a question, Norm? And, and I know it's not a policy, but I thought the procedure was, say I wanna put something on there, I've gotta talk to you and John before it goes on there. Is that still the correct way things are being done?
Technically, that's probably correct. My, for my part, for me sending a share, if you went to write directly to John first, I don't have a problem.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
I know John would get to me.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure the board knows that there is a, that's the word I'm looking for. Um, way of doing it as opposed to just calling up Tamika, put it on the, put it on the agenda. I, I think we should.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
That's my opinion. I'll shut up after that.
Okay, are we done with this?
Yes, I think so.
Make a motion to adopt the revised policy?
Oh, yeah, we gotta do that.
I'll make a motion to adopt a revised policy. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
Not feeling very happy with it.
Yeah.
But that's me.
Always just try it and see how it works.
That's right.
If it doesn't work, well.
Yeah.
Maybe a different one. Okay, any further discussion on it? Hearing them, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah.
Okay, we have the policy. Okay.
This is the one that I was looking at in the packet and I'm going like, this is typed. That's how old this thing is.
Subcommittee, yeah. Oh, God.
Why was this brought up? Cause it was found in a document from 1996.
It is, it is on the second page.
Now, I was just saying, when I went and started reading this, I just started bringing back old memories and I've got little, uh.
At a second, you might say.
At a house in Chicago at this time.
This Harry and Judy were my aunt and uncle.
So, Norm, my problem is that when this motion and obviously was second and voted anonymously, what do we do? Because this is not.
It, it isn't.
What we have.
Well.
You sure there wasn't anything between this?
That was all I needed to find.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Cause didn't we just reconstitute the bylaw subcommittee in the mid 2000s? Cause before then it really.
There was a while it wasn't doing anything.
Yeah.
Uh, but the 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 only problem that, that I have with this whole thing is that, uh, a member from the ZBA and a member from, uh, the RRC. Well, you're on IDAC anyway.
Yeah, and so is Dick, so.
So I guess that's okay. We never, we never did get anyone, ever, ever, ever.
Appeals? So this committee could be as big as, let's see, there's five of us, six, seven, could be 10 people on this committee.
I'm not really close to that.
Oh, I know that, but. I mean, we got seven or eight once, close.
Oh, yeah, we had quite a few checking around there. You better believe it.
So do we go back to this and ask the zone, cause is the zoning board of appeals, three people or five? I apologize. I don't know.
Six.
Six? Thanks, Tamika. So do we ask one of them if they would like to be on the bylaw subcommittee just to?
Oh, that's, I guess.
I mean, I don't mind following what was done in 96. I'm okay. The problem is it says economic and industrial development.
That's Randy.
Well, that's the problem is it's not RDIC. It's a different group. And back then, I don't think that group existed, did it?
No.
It was RDIC.
Well, no, wait, wait a minute.
Then there was the Economic and Industrial, the, right, Industrial Development Commission. It wasn't the RDIC.
Yep. Wasn't Bonnie Best the chair for a while too on that?
I don't know. I was a member of it.
Yeah.
Going way back when.
Okay.
I don't think we even did anything, but.
I mean, I'm fine for having Randy's group as a mem- asking for a member. Not RDIC.
Oh, oh, oh.
See what I'm getting at?
Hmm.
Norm, we got RDIC and we have an Economic and Development Committee now. So we have two different groups.
I can buy that.
I'm fine.
You're ready, another meeting to come to.
Or an individual one as a group. So, do you want me to send out emails to the chairs of the art, of the EID? I like that. I'll do some acronyms. EID and zoning bo- and ZBA? And ask them if, uh, we would, uh, based upon our charge, we would like to have a member on the bylaw subcommittee?
The, the, the only, the only question I really have is, for example, if we don't get someone from ZBA, does that make the subcommittee defective?
If I may, I would argue no, because there's other boards and commissions that are supposed to have representation from other groups and they oftentimes haven't filled those seats, but they still operate with the members that they have.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and Tamika's already asked multiple times on the website for anybody to join and I, I don't think we've got one email.
No, nobody's listening.
Yeah, so the three citizens are officials is another moot point.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So.
And unfortunately, that one moved out of town, Bonnie.
Yeah, keep telling her that we got these nice over 55 condoms that you can buy and.
Anyway, anyway.
Okay, so do we wanna, I guess when I'm asking, Norm, do we want to, this charge, go back to it and that's what our charge is? And come up with this number, which is basically total of 10?
I don't see a real problem with it.
I don't, I don't know.
Seems like a lot of people, yeah, with the discussion.
You ever get that many?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll never get to 10 people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can live on if, you know, people don't call up, I guess, you know.
I'm, I'm fine with that. So do we need, do I need to get that, have Tamika post this charge under the bylaw subcommittee just to, as a mission statement or something like that?
It would be a good idea.
That's what I'm asking, I guess.
Or do we, or do we have another meeting and vote it different?
Well, we all wanna think about it.
Yeah, before you do it, Tamika, we've got a meeting coming up in March. Let's, uh, I'll put that on the agenda, discussion of mission statement.
Okay, so you'll discuss that at a bylaw meeting?
I'm gonna put that as a note right now. Mission statement.
Okay, next, zoning bylaw tables.
Yes, so in your packet, I gave you a copy of what I've been working on for the Maytown meeting, which is simply taking items that are already in text form and putting them into a more user-friendly tabular format. Now, I just, I went through it again yesterday just to cross the, cross the Ts and dot the Is to make sure the table, the used table was, was accurate, exactly accurate. But, and so this is something I'd like to put on for a public hearing at the first meeting in April and to put forward to the Maytown meeting. And again, it's taking information that's already in the zoning bylaws and simply putting it in tabular form for easy reference by people. Again, as a step to make our bylaws.
John, this is not a dig, tick or anything. It's just a comment because I like what you did. The only thing I was gonna ask for is at the top where it's got the, got the R40, R60B, VC, TC1, somewhere we need to put in there a definition of that. Cause you got the definitions of all of the residential uses like SB and all that stuff, but I couldn't find.
Well, well, hold on, hold on, Tim. That's at the beginning of the zoning bylaws. It basically defines at the beginning of zone, zoning bylaws.
Okay.
So the R40 should be designated on its own.
And after going through this, after going through this thing for kind of loud, I think the planning board should go through this whole list because I find it very insulting.
In what perspective?
Why is it insulting?
Because I, I look at some of this. I look at some of this stuff are kinda loud and I, why can't it be in, uh, VC area? What, and, and some of the other ones there, every once in a while, I.
I think, I think honestly.
Well, this is, this is already in the bylaws, Dick. This is what's already in there.
Creating this?
I, I, I didn't change anything. This is, this is a reflection of what is allowed in these districts.
Okay, excuse me, but in creating this. Okay, excuse me, but in creating this thing, what it has done is, I think, brought to light some things that should be changed.
Yes.
That should be allowed. And in our review of this thing, that, and I do think we do, we need to review it very, very carefully.
Yes.
Not just for, for accuracy, but to see, oh, maybe we really do want to, you know, allow.
Yeah.
Solar systems in the VC, uh, the Town Center District or who knows what.
So, Norm, is, is this getting added into our bylaws, a table in the back of it, is that what? Okay, I'm sorry then.
No, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be added in at the beginning, the use table's gonna be added in right before the use regulations. And the dimensional table right before the dimensional regulations.
Okay, well, a- a- as long as somewhere, somebody can look up what the top, these are, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
And I'm good, I just want to make sure that, because not everybody in this town knows what TC one and TC two is.
Yes, but they do know that it's the right to farm community, therefore, why is it not, um, in village centers and things like that? Why isn't it allowed?
Well, that's, that's part of, I think, what Norm said, Dick, is we, this has got to be, we've got to spend some time going through this and find out. What we need to do to make corrections, and then that comes to the bylaw subcommittee. And we make recommendations on what needs to be changed, that's my opinion.
So this needs to be a further agenda item.
Yeah, you guys are loading me up with agenda items, you know that, right?
Okay.
I want to get the solar battery thing through, and then we can move on to everything, let me get, let me get one win.
Okay, number seven, master plan, uh.
I'll cover that under my report.
Yeah, that's, I, I apologize, I didn't have time to get up here.
Active subcommittees, uh, I guess the only thing is, I did take a look at both Chris and Lindsay's case today. And I did see, uh, Tom Larson, uh, they're digging for a second foundation off Lindsey Circle or whatever the heck it's called, Bryce Lemon. And, uh, Tom said that they're probably gonna be laying the water in sewer on phase two of Brenton within a week or two.
Really?
Yeah. Wow.
Did, did, Norm, did we? Talk, because Keith brought this up, and I don't think we put it to bed. Did we get any updates from, from Mr. Larson or Mr. Blair on, on?
Phase four?
Yeah, when we're gonna do the tie-in.
I don't believe so.
Should we, I guess I'm asking the board, should we just send a tickler email to Cle to try to get us, uh, you know, Q one, Q two, Q four of twenty twenty-four? When are you looking at doing that tie-in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not looking for a specific month, day, just get me in the quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll buy that.
John, are you okay with that?
Yeah, what do you want to do, Tim?
Is send Cle an email and ask him for the tie-in at Bryce Lemon, when I say tie-in, I think it's phase four. Which will tie the two sections together, give us a quarter in twenty twenty-four when he's planning to do that. Because Keith has had some, some constituents ask, you know, right now, there's no, you basically have two multi-thousand-foot dead ends. And no crossover, so that's it, thanks.
Okay.
There's been quite a few come, people come and say, let's get, let's get this thing done.
Okay, uh, correspondents, we have an untown plan report.
Yeah, so in your packet, I know we talked about this when we established the public comment portion of the agenda. Select board has in place and tailored to the planning board, has something for the board to have in terms of meeting decorum for the public comment portion. To make sure that people are respectful and that there's some kind of, you know, a little, not too much structure, but a little bit of structure to it. To make sure that people are respectful and things move along and, um, things don't get too, I guess the right word would be, too toxic or too, uh, adversarial.
I thought. We, we got two minutes down here, I thought it was five.
It's a total of ten for the.
That's a town meeting.
Town meeting.
Right.
Town meeting. Yeah, this is for us inside, uh.
Well, I think it was, if there's more than one person. Maybe it divides down to whatever, how many people are here, but I.
If I may, if you look back in the January twenty-third minutes in your packet, that should say how long of a time slot you guys had designated. For pub- I thought you had designated ten minutes total.
Total.
For the public comment portion.
Yes.
Yeah.
And two minutes is a long time.
Yes, two minutes can be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen that go much longer. Yeah, Britton, you better know, somebody gets into a filibuster, they can run. And that's why, um, did we, I, I know maybe we had discussed high level, but did we put any language or verbiage in there, discretion of the chair?
I believe so, yes.
To extend, you know, if we're getting into things that are actually good for discussion. Um, and, and, and getting somewhere and, or, and or diving into things that matter, that, that the chair could extend the conversation.
It, it does say, Britton, the chair will moderate all meetings according to standards of reason protocols adopted by the board, including these rules.
Okay. Okay, good, yeah, yeah, all right.
And if I may.
You're right.
We added it to the agenda too. It says that unless otherwise stated by the chair, the ten minutes.
Okay, all right, fair, thank you.
I'm okay with this.
Okay, uh, the other thing is, the fifth bullet down, uh, there's a misspelling. Says any person who speaks in encouraged.
Oh, okay, are encouraged, yep, or is encouraged, yep.
Yeah, is encouraged.
Because I foul language, born on a farm, brought up on a farm?
Quit talking chicken, buddy, okay?
I think, I think it's, I think it's, uh.
Why do you think? Yeah, why do you think I asked, do you know how to muck a cow and ride a horse?
Use foul. Because guess what you gotta do with both?
Is there, Norm, a- and this is just me from a previous meeting, um. Could we put in threatening language and actions? A- am I pushing that one?
Sorry, which, which, which item is that?
It's item, it's item, it's bullet four, it says any person who speaks is encouraged to refrain from using foul language and from using threatening language or actions.
Okay.
I just, I want to, I, if somebody gets up and, you know, and tries to intimidate, I really want you have the ability to say.
Or pulls out a baseball bat.
Well, yeah, that's, I just, I, I thought, language is one thing, but there is still the opportunity for physical, and I think we should, we should mention that as part of our decorum. That's my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but. John, yes, no?
That's fine, yes, that's fine.
I think it's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
Does, does the, does the select board, Austin, have that? Because they've got a decorum too. I don't want to, I don't want to have us have a different one, because then we're sort of.
Uh, no, we don't have a public comment policy.
Okay, okay. So we'll sell it to you really cheap, this one, no charge. All right, that's it, I don't know, I like this. Still need to get you a gavel though, gotta get you a gavel. Uh, works too.
Okay, master plan update status.
Do we need to adopt this? Do we need to?
Yes.
Uh, uh.
Uh, we gotta wait for a final version?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, got ahead of the.
Master plan update, um, that's on hold, because in a meeting that Austin and I were involved in with, um, the executive director. And the assist- assistant executive director from CMR PC, our master plan cannot be accepted as it is, because we do not have any. Goals and objectives, at the very least, for open space and recreation, so.
The Open Space Committee never got back to us.
The plan ratified until, until we address that, so, um, I've been in contact with Melissa from the Open Space Committee. Um, they're finalizing a draft, so once I have that, have a portion of that, or have that, I can send it off to CMR PC. To see if there's a portion of that that can be incorporated into the master plan, at least the goals and objectives. To bring it to the bare, bare minimum of being able to have all the elements in place to get it accepted, so right now, we found out the master plan. We have to push pause on that for now, until that gets done.
Because, Norm, we left that open, didn't we? We left that whole tab open, because they hadn't got it finished.
Damn it. And why aren't we trying to meet to go through this?
Dick, I'm, I'm, I'm probably the biggest problem, because I am right now straight out.
I know he is straight out, Tim, for crying out loud, but.
I can do weekends.
Since November.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm sorry, just, if we can set a time, I can possibly try to work something around it. John, if you want to, I don't know what your schedule is, but usually.
Try something, something for next, a week from Thursday.
Thursdays are my day where I can possibly finagle something.
Except this Thursday.
This Thursday I can, I have got, I've got.
Well, that, that's okay, I have a couple, um, my mornings filled up with two meetings, so, um, Thursday's not a great day.
I've got an emergency training session at, at our, our internet command center, so I have to be there for that. But next Thursday, I don't have anything right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, sorry.
Item eleven, other. Okay, public comments, uh. Got anything? Public comment, I don't see anybody out there online either.
No.
And number thirteen.
Public, we got.
Oh.
We have three.
Four.
Ten, ten minutes, well, that's gonna fall into thirteen.
Oh.
Uh, any other discussion not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours of the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, something came to my attention today from Tamika. Um, regarding a gentleman who came in to ask about a license, so I will defer to Tamika to explain what happened, since I worked remotely today and I was not in the annex.
Well. Yes?
So, Adam, hi, um, Austin Roadside Eatery, um, came into the Board of Health and the Select Board Office today. Um, because he was seeking a common fixer license, and as it turns out, he does not need one. Um, but during our discussion, he mentioned that the commercial kitchen that he's going to be operating out of is at Jordan Farm. Um, so in discussions with Austin, um, we felt it was important for the board to have that information. Based on the decision that you had made last week on the site plan modification.
Okay.
Yes, so, uh, ob- obviously, this is put on the agenda, um, as something that couldn't have recently been anticipated. But what I, what I would recommend is, I know Mr. Joint's there tonight, but again, for transparency, I would ask the board to put this as a discussion item for their next agenda.
I'm not sure if there's a necessity for that.
I would like to hear.
Discuss it tonight if you want, but that's my recommendation.
I would like to hear, because we've already gone through it.
You want to hear tonight?
I would. But that's me.
I'm not sure, Norm, I can make a decision, I, but I'd like to talk about it. I don't know if that, I don't know what the rest of the board says, but I want to. Mr. Chairman, myself, I would, I would, I would open it to, uh, you know, public comment in regards to this situation. I'd like to hear, um, some discussion on it. So, Britton, we, you're the same as me, you want to hear about it, but you're not sure you want to go anywhere with it. Correct, correct. Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on this.
Okay. Um. I don't know, a- at least, let's see if I can sum it up as. As succinctly as I can here. Uh, apparently, Randy has hired, and again, your name, I keep forgetting. Adam. Uh, to. Prepare, cook, whatever you want to call it, turkey pot pies, or possibly, in the future, I, I'll use as an example, beef pot pies. If you have some pigs, these go slather, pork pot pies, uh, you know, or, or whatever. Uh, but apparently, Adam also has a food truck business in which he, uh, cooks and prepares seafood.
Correct, the seafood that is prepared.
Stand up, stand up for yourself.
The sea, the seafood that's prepared for the truck is lobster meat is already pre-cooked. And then we deal with frozen seafood, so in the kitchen that's being performed there, there's going to be no seafood that's going to be cooked on site. Um, ninety percent of everything is cooked on the truck. What is prepared in the kitchens are potato salad, pasta salad, um, our sauces, which is our bang-bang sauce. Um, remoulade sauce, uh, we make chicken salad, um. That's basically it, everything else is done on the truck, cooked to order.
That gives me a little bit more pause, because those salads can be considered a agricultural item. Seafood, I would say no, but, um, the salads, the pasta salad and stuff like that, that's considered a roadside farm stand and sold, so. I've got more of a warm fuzzy for that. Where I would eat seafood, so that's my opinion to the board. Again, I'm, I'm not making a decision, Adam, I'm just saying that that's my opinion, so I've, I've got a little bit more of that, and since that's basically. Other than boiling potatoes, that's basically cold items being prepped.
Correct.
You're not really, you're using a table, you're not actually using kitchen, that's the word I'm looking for, to, kitchen. Ovens and, and things like that to prep a, a whole meal, so. I'm a little bit more okay with that than, because again, just for the boards, I read the emails that was out there. And I was a little bit, oh, boy, we got some discussion about this, so that explanation gives me a little bit more of a, uh. I hate to use the word warm and fuzzy than what I read in the emails about prepping food and all that stuff, because first thing I thought of was kitchen. You're gonna be making fish, fish tacos, things like that, and, and prepping it.
See, that's all done on the truck.
Okay, all right, thank you for that explanation.
So, it's still agricultural, basically.
Yeah, a- and, and obviously, if he, if he was doing fish preparation in there, you know, to me, that wouldn't fly. Uh, but for, for the rest of it. You must cook potatoes to put them in the turkey pot pies, right?
Mm-hmm. You have to.
Those are the ones that I eat.
Then there's also vegetables and things like that that would go into.
Carrots, peas.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what you put in your pies, but.
Yeah, we don't tell our secrets.
Okay, okay, the secret sauce.
And I guess I'll ask the question, because I'm thinking it, the truck will not be selling on the property where it's making it, correct?
Correct.
All right, I had to ask that question.
Fully mobile, uh, we're permitted in thirty-two towns.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure you're not. Okay, I'm good, that, that was my only, the only thing I wanted to verify.
Well, they can still sell the, sell, uh, sell the turkey pies.
Oh, yeah, 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 but I, I wanted to make sure that.
Tim, no disrespect, Randy Jordan, fifty-one Muscat Park Road. The agricultural accessory bylaw, if I am correct, if we choose to have a food truck there, whether it's off the hook, flip the bird, uh. Flip the chicken, whatever the other one here is in town, we can have a food truck parked on our front lawn to sell our, our product there. Or his product, nothing says you can't, go to Milk Run Brewery, go to Lilac Hedge, both other agricultural accessories. Food trucks come in there all the time to sell that isn't made at their face. I'm at least making the stuff at our place.
Yeah.
And yes.
So gentlemen, so the question becomes, is a food truck considered a roadside stand if it's parked on the side of the road? And it seems like it has been treated like a roadside stand in other instances from what Randy's saying.
That's true, I present my thought process.
They're just telling you what others are doing, right?
I know.
I mean, we've been very transparent what we're doing here in regards to making turkey pot pies, is Adam gonna prep some things out of there? Sure, but the majority of it's gonna come off the farm.
And that's, and that's the key, Randy, right there, when I went through the bylaw, when I, when I, when I, um, received the email from Tamika today. That's one thing that stood out the bylaw, it says the majority.
Yes.
Of, of what's produced has to come from the farm, it doesn't stipulate. Of, of what's produced has to come from the farm, it doesn't stipulate exactly how much, fifty-one percent, fifty-two. As long as the board can have a comfort level with the percentage that's coming from the property, then the board has the, has the right to be okay with it, in my opinion.
Yeah, and that's why when the salads came up, I've got a, a high, I've got a high tolerance.
But Adam sells hot dogs, he sells roast beef, other things that can come off the farm from there. I mean, I disagree, I mean, with Norm said, but in regards to seafood, there are farms that grow scallops and waffles, not from the ocean, that are considered farming, called the Private Food Ag in Massachusetts. The old commission of agriculture has a scallop farm, they physically grow that, that's considered farming.
Okay.
But we're not here talking about that, you're, you're here talking about with my transparency of what's going forward, doing it.
And I'm.
That's a good point.
I'm, I'm actually fine with it, that's what I'm trying to get at, I guess, I'm fine. I just wanted to ask about the, uh, I, I'm gonna be honest with the board, I'm not cool what's going on up at Schultz's Farm where you got a restaurant and a truck parked outside it, that's my opinion. I'm not, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for Tim Narwhal, okay?
So, I mean, can we stick to this property, please, Tim, we don't wanna get ourselves in hot water?
That's why I asked the question, that's what I was, oh, I was trying to put the background to it, of why I asked the question.
Tim, John, Mr. Chairman, um, Britton Bradford. I, I personally have looked at the agricultural use by law. One oh two definitions means commercial activities designed and marketed to bring the public farm enterprise for farm-related experience. If a, if, if a massive portion of Mr. Jordan's, Jordan Dairy's farm is coming out of this, this food truck, I don't see, personally, this is just me personally, I don't see that as an issue. I think it's, it's in, again, a personal, um, opinion, it's within the intent of this particular bylaw. I mean, as long as they're not setting up, which I don't think they are, and, and I'll, I'll leave Mr. Jordan to talk about, they're not, they're not setting up a restaurant, there's gonna be no seats here, they're preparing food, they're helping, um, you know, Jordan Dairy prepare, um, these chicken pot pies, pumpkin pies, whatever that may be, to whatever end, um, and if, at the same time, they are also preparing food to be a profitable enterprise off-site, um, I don't know that there's a mechanism for our enforcement and or reading into the bylaw any further than what's written, I don't see that as an issue.
I don't think there's any action, is what I'm trying to get at, I'm, I'm trying to say it, but I'm not saying it.
So, so, Tim, I think what you're getting at is, I don't think the board needs to take any action on this. I thought it was important for the board to discuss this, just to make sure everyone was, was, was okay with what was, what was being done, because it wasn't exactly what was discussed at the meeting when the board approved this modification. So I just wanted to make sure, I thought it was important for the board to discuss this, to make sure everyone's okay with this.
And Randy, the only reason I've asked a lot of questions, cuz these two emails is the only information I had before this meeting. And, and that's the reason why I'm asking the questions, so. And I, and this is my, now I'm back as a planning board member, I don't think there's any action to be taken here. I think just let John finish writing that letter to get to Mr. Jordan and that we approved last meeting.
It's already written, Tim, it, it went out the next day.
Okay, so I think it's a, in my opinion, it's a moot point.
That way, if, if the planning board gets any questions on the food truck, it's not a surprise. If a member of the public says something, the board can say that it came before it and the board approved it. Or approved of it.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody feel if there's any future discussion necessary for this?
I don't. I'll, I'll say, from my opinion, I don't, I don't know what the rest of the board does.
On this situation, no. I don't.
It's like you're hiring him to work for you or it's a shared. Adam is an employee of Jordan Dairy Farms.
Okay, yeah.
It's the way I have to sell the turkey pot pies legally for turkey pot pies.
That's all set up then.
Yeah, yes, I have his W two here if you'd like to see it.
Oh, I don't, yeah. Negotiate raises, I'm real good at that, if you wanna talk about something.
Let's talk after.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, seems pretty up and up, you know?
Okay.
Sounds like the board's in agreement.
Agreed.
So, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Okay, we have item fourteen on the agenda.
Move their drink.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.